Welcome to the April 16th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phone, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. We do have a new implementation of speaker request forms. The Commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on an item, please complete a speaker request form located in the bookshelves in the back of the chambers and return it to Ms. Holly Hennies on the lower side of the dais. And Ms. Holly, if you could raise your hand, if you'd like to speak today on any item, please fill out one of those forms and just hand it to Ms. Holly. Thank you. Next, we'll have a moment of silent reflection and pledge allegiance led by Ms. Holly today.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is a review and approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect.
No.
No move by LaCroix.
Move by LaCroix, second by DeSanto.
You sound the same, sorry. We'll have to separate you two. So, motion by DeSanto, second by LaCroix. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Holly, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 2nd, 2019; to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of March 2019; to approve the general fund operating transfer to the E-911 Fund in the amount of $763,256; and to approve the budgeted general fund operating transfer to the emergency management fund in the amount of $154,397. Number eight is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on May 7th, 2019 for Budget Supplement SP-19-010 for the Title III Fund Search and Rescue Budget in the amount of $73,243.92. Number nine is approval of the second quarter 2019 state and local agreement with the state of South Dakota. Number 10 is to continue the Trans-Canada Keystone XL Pipeline-Hall Road Agreement to the May 21st, 2019 Commission meeting. Number 11 is approval of the adopt-a-highway application for a portion of Neck-Yolke Road by the Daniel family. Number 12 is the approval of the request for authorization to reapply for the Volka and Stop Vowel Grants. Number 13 is to declare the shotguns, rifles, and pistols a surplus and acceptable for auction or disposal as submitted by the Sheriff's Office. And finally, number 14 is approval of the joint powers agreement for weed spraying services between the South Dakota Department of Transportation and Pennington County. And Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to respectfully request that you pull number nine from your consent agenda, please.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, is there anyone from the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda, five through 14? If not, is there any Commissioners that would like to remove any five through 14 on the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix, please.
Item 11, please.
Okay, number 11, Lloyd. LaCroix, Commissioner LaCroix. Any others? If not, can we have a motion with the exception of number nine and number 11, please?
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Drews, second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Holly, please, number nine. Dustin? You don't look like Holly, Dustin.
I do not. Dustin Willett, the Director of Emergency Management for Rapid City, Pennington County. Good morning, Commission. The reason that Holly and my office wanted this pulled was when we submitted the SLA report for the packet, unfortunately, we submitted a working copy, not the final copy. So, on that Exhibit C, where on your packet it had some highlighted questions, those were highlighted questions from staff to me that I then answered for the official packet. So, in the official packet, instead of those highlighted questions, it has the answers. So, in Exhibit C for January on the question, I met with our regional coordinator on January 9th at Camp Rapid, and then in March, because we'd already had that taken care of, there was no activity that was needed or performed.
Thank you.
So, just a clerical error, we submitted the working copy instead of the final copy. So, I wanted to pull that and make sure that you were briefed on the correct document.
Thank you, Dustin. Any questions for Dustin? If not, a motion for number nine, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, second by LaCroix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Number 11 is Commissioner LaCroix, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason why I had this pulled is to point out that it takes members of the public to help keep our streets, our highways and country roads clean, and I just wanted to thank the Daniel family for adopting the Neck-Yolke Road District and putting that forward, and I just wanted to give them some recognition.
Thank you, Lloyd. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by DeSanto, second by LaCroix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Regular agenda items, again, we do have the speaker request forms, and this is 15 through 21. If you have any item that you'd like to speak on, on 15 through 21, please fill out your speaker request form and give it to Ms. Holly on the left side of the dais. Thank you. First, we'll have items from Emergency Services Communication 911. Kevin Carley, please.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Kevin Carley, Director, ESCC. As most of you know, this week is National Telecommunicator Week, and it's an opportunity for us to celebrate the people that work behind the scenes most of the time. We don't work in the public eye at the 911 center like law enforcement or fire services. So, most of the time, if people call 911, they don't ever see the person or interact with the person other than the contact they have with on the telephone. So, this is an opportunity for us to say thank you to the dispatchers for what they do every day. They're every bit as dedicated as any other one that works for, any other person that works for public safety. So, this is our week to celebrate that to them.
Kevin, can we have you read the proclamation for us? Do you need it? It's right here, sir.
Please.
Thank you. That way, the public knows that we support you, and our proclamation is one of those letters of support for your team. So, thank you.
Thank you. Whereas, Pennington County recognizes the significance of the Emergency Communications Center to Pennington County and its citizens. And whereas, emergencies requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services can occur at any time without notice. Whereas, prompt emergency response is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers, deputies, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by public safety telecommunicators from citizens who report emergencies to the Pennington County Emergency Services Communication Center. Whereas, the public safety telecommunicators are the first contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, deputies, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, relaying information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators of the public, excuse me, of the Pennington County Emergency Services Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, the public safety telecommunicators exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job each and every day. Therefore, we, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, Pennington County, South Dakota hereby proclaim April 14th through 20th, 2019 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. In Pennington County, to honor the Emergency Services Communication Center public telecommunicators whose diligence and professionalism continue to keep our community safe.
Thank you, Kevin. I think that says it all, what you guys do. You're amazing. We couldn't do it here in Pennington County or Rapid City or the surrounding areas without you. You guys make a huge difference of the safety of our citizens, and we appreciate everything you do. We'd like you to come up front, if you would, and take a picture with us, and thank you personally for what you do for Pennington County.
While they're coming forward, can I make the motion to authorize the Chair to sign the proclamation?
Yes, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Come on, sit down there.
Yeah.
Come on up here, you guys.
I think I need to be behind you guys, not in front of you. Yep, better off being sideways.
You got enough room there?
Have to squeeze a little bit.
I think we need these guys.
Let's turn sideways. Yeah, we'll be behind you guys. Go up.
You're good.
You're good.
You gotta stand behind you. Go ahead, go ahead and go a little bit more forward.
I gotta go a little now.
All right, Lloyd. Sorry, Lloyd.
Can we get that stool?
All right, one, two, three, cheese. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, you all.
Next, we'll do number 16, lean release request. Ms. Holly, do we have some explanation here?
Commissioners, I do not see the applicant in the audience again. If you want to table this, we'll do our best to go and get ahold of him. If not, we may do a continuance again.
Move to table.
Motion by Drews to table, second.
Second.
By Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number 17 is items from the auditor. And your name, ma'am? How are you this morning?
Good, how are you? Good. Sabrina Green, Deputy Auditor, and I'm just asking for the approval of Supplement 19-009, General Fund Health and Human Services Committee, Community Development Block Grant Budget in the amount of $24,848.
Thank you, Ms. Sabrina. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ross Connect, second.
I'll second that.
By Drews, discussion? Stay up here, Ms. Sabrina, just for a second. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number 17 is items from the auditor. And your name, ma'am? How are you this morning?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Sabrina Green, Deputy Auditor, and I'm just asking for the approval of Supplement 19-009, General Fund Health and Human Services Committee, Community Development Block Grant Budget in the amount of $24,848.
Thank you, Ms. Sabrina. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ross Connect, second.
I'll second that.
By Drews, discussion? Stay up here, Ms. Sabrina, just for a second. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sabrina. Ms. Vicki, malt beverage license renewal process, please. Good morning, Ms. Vicki.
Good morning. Vicki Wolf, Deputy Auditor. I am here to get a change made to our malt beverage license renewal for our malt beverage. We don't want to publish the public hearing anymore. It would save money. I know you got this slip from Cindy.
Any discussion or motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
I think, you know, as it's outlined, I think it's a good idea. It's, what it's laid out is if there's any violations or any problems, it triggers it to be back up in front of us, and that would include selling to minors or anything along those lines would bring it automatic back.
Yes, we get the notice from the Sheriff's Office, and then we would make sure it get advertised before it came in front of you guys.
Okay.
And it's just the malt beverage renewal.
Just malt, not the liquor.
No, the liquor one is to change that. We have to do an ordinance, because it is in our ordinance for liquor licensing. So, we're going to work on that.
Any other discussion? No, motion, please?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroix.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number 18, thank you, Ms. Vicki. Items from Sheriff, Sheriff Tom. Jail kitchen equipment bid authorization.
Good morning, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. Just have a request and a motion to replace a large kettle cooker in the jail. It was slated to be replaced. We moved to the new kitchen here about a year from now, I guess, whenever the construction's done, but it broke on us. We do 750,000 to 800,000 meals a year, so we do a lot of food service, it's a critical part of what we do, and just looking for authorization to bid it out to replace it. It's probably a $30,000, $40,000 piece of equipment, but need to get it replaced.
Thank you, Sheriff Tom. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
Kevin, is it just one of them? And that, could you describe it? It's the great big ones that are sitting on the floor.
This'll, the one will probably get replaced by two pieces of equipment, depends how the bids come in, but yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto, second by LaCroix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Items from Emergency Management, Director Dustin Willett. State and local agreement work plan and funding changes for 2019.
Good morning, once again, Commission, Dustin Willett, Director of Emergency Management. So, this is an item that in the past, two things have happened. We've brought it before our Users Board, and then it has come to you in the consent agenda. There have been significant changes introduced by the state that are, this is the first time that we're doing that. What the state has required this year and moving forward is a far more detailed accounting of our grant spending and the work plan that we do. So, the state requires my office to do certain activities at certain times in order to be eligible for the federal pass-through grant that the state manages. And before, it was just kind of a checkbox, yep, we did this, yep, we did this, yep, we did this, and the state has decided, rightly so, that there needs to be a little more explanation and a little more accountability in making sure that we're meeting the requirements for that grant funding that the state sets out. So, the form looks different. It's the same questions, the requirements didn't change, just the explanation of how we met those requirements is now provided in greater detail. So, since it was a format change, and one of the requirements is that I bring the work plan before the Commission so that the Commission is aware that there are things that my office has to do in order to be eligible for that funding, we're bringing it forward today for your perusal and just information only. There's no motion that needs to be acted on this, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
So, Dustin, you talked about these reports, so is the Commission going to get these quarterly reports, too?
So, the quarterly reports always come, they've always come to the consent calendar or the consent agenda, but yes, we always pass through the quarterly reports through the Commission.
And this is just a different layout?
Yep, this is a new format, more detailed explanation of how we meet those requirements.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Follow-up? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Dustin. Number 20 is items from equalization, Shannon Rittberger. First of all, abatement applications, can we do them all at once?
Good morning. Yes, you can.
Okay.
These are two simple abatement requests that come from my office, faults in procedures in our office. They're really simple.
Is that okay if we do both at the same time, Board? Okay. Do we have a motion or a discussion? Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by LaCroix. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Shannon.
I would like to add something. I would like to come back in a couple of months and talk about the procedure that we have for this owner-occupied classification and set up a policy for an abatement to make this more, maybe not more simple, but easier to do, maybe consent agenda, set up a policy that says if this, this, and this, this is what Pennington County will do. So, look for that in the future. I'll write up a rough draft, and then we can talk about it.
Okay, I think Ron Ross Connect had talked to me about it, kind of working with you on that, if that's okay with you, to write it up and...
If I have to, yeah.
Shannon, that's another subject that we're working on, right? We're just working on the assessment notices.
We had talked earlier about adding some things to the assessment notices that have to do with owner-occupied. Yeah, we're going to do that. I would like to set up something for these abatements and others, not only owner-occupied issues with abatements, but other abatements that are simple, no-brainer, some kind of policy that make it a little bit quicker. Yeah, Ron is right, there is another issue with the assessment notice, and we'll be working on that another couple of weeks, too.
Well, it's nice for one of the Commissioners to be working with you, just so we're kind of, he can visit with us of what we're thinking or our constituents and bring that back to you as well, so...
Yep, I expect what I'm talking about here to take weeks, if not months.
Yes, sir.
I'd be more than happy to work with you on the abatement issues, too.
Okay. I'll be back in a couple of weeks, then we'll talk about it.
Okay. Commissioner LaCroix.
Shannon, I agree with that. I think if it meets certain standards, I think that's a very good idea to bring that forward. I appreciate that, because it saves you from all this, if it's meeting the criteria, if it's just an accident mistake and you guys are catching it, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alrighty. 21 items from Highway Department, Joe Miller. Highway software replacement first, please.
Good morning, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. First up, we have the highway software replacement. During the 2019 budget hearings, IT requested that they discontinue the support of our highway application and all of our software stuff that, got a lot of history and stuff in there. Road and bridge management, work history, programmed work, payroll on employee vouchers, inventory, our fleet management, our fuel management and sales to other entities is also in there, capital assets, cost accounting, infrastructure reporting under the GASP 34 that's required by the state, and then all our GIS maps are connected to the software as well. Talking to IT, it's really just a bear to, for them to keep a programmer on to do this stuff, so they asked us to then look to find a, another solution. Chris, our accountant, took this head-on. Want to say thank you to all the work she did in getting this, finding this solution for us. Our previous solution was a homegrown software that was developed since about the early 90s. It was greatly expanded in 2008 to include other county departments. As Chris learned, there was no single solution to replacing our software, so we kind of found a solution that fits the majority of our needs, and we'll have to fill in the gaps as we go with what, when we get this fully implemented. We've supplemented IT approximately $28,000 annually, and about $19,000 for software and $9,000 for hardware. The cost of this new software is, for the initial cost and setup, is about $43,800. After the first year, it's about $5,900, so it's a pretty cost-effective solution, and we feel that the PubWorks will fit our needs going forward, long into the future.
Thank you. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Question for Chris.
Lori?
Lori, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Lori, does your department have the capability, knowledge, and time to do the installation and conversion, or do we need that other company to do that?
We're going to work with the company, and we've already discussed with Chris what is going to be necessary to convert. Chris is very into working with the database and stuff, so she knows what's all in the database, knows what she wants converted and what won't be converted. We're going to work with her, and then, as Joe said, to fill in the gaps, we have discussed with the software company, and we will be able to read the data and be able to pull out information and create the missing pieces, the missing links that they need, so.
Okay.
But we'll work with them, yes.
Great, thank you.
Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Follow-up?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Joe, a couple of questions. I see that there's an annual fee of $5,900.
Yes.
Can you tell us what that fee would cover?
So, that's the licensing for the software, and then it's also support by, you know, if we need fields added or something that's not working correctly, much like IT has done with our homegrown software, we'd be reaching out to them, kind of lighten the load on IT.
So, is this on a year-to-year basis, or is there some type of a contract?
It's a year-to-year basis, just much like, I don't know if you're familiar with AutoCAD or any of that other software. PubWorks is in a lot of other counties. I can't tell you how many other counties use this software, but they are a very large software company, so it's just an annual license that we would purchase every year.
You know, and technology increases so rapidly that in two years, two years it could be obsolete, I'm not saying it is, but do they upgrade this, is it upgradable year-to-year so that we've got some longevity with this?
From my understanding, yes, they do update it regularly, and they're actually working to update it before we even, there's some features that they don't have currently that before we get fully implemented, it'll be upgraded to increase even some more of those features.
So, we could be looking for this program to work for another 10 years?
That's the hope, yes.
Good circumstances?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto, please.
Kind of a follow-up on Ron's question. Number four, annual support and maintenance. If new software modules are purchased during this agreement, the annual payment amount will increase by 20% of the cost of the new module, so those new modules, I'm assuming, is what is needed to update it every year, keep it going.
Correct.
Guys, we need to put our mics closer to our mouths. Number one, I can't hear which one on the end is speaking, and then I think the public too for, thank you, Mark.
You bet.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Sir?
Do you get your...
Commissioner LaCroix.
I did. Okay. I see, Joe, I see on here, I'm not familiar with the program, but I see it comes with all the maintenance and support that you're going to need in the upgrades with that, that cost. One of the icons that I see up here, when you get the fleet maintenance work orders, which I think in the map viewers, that, can you explain to me a little bit about the program? Service requests, I mean, someone puts in a work order, then you're, that person's going to be able, once they complete it, be able to complete it, and you'll see it real time, I'm assuming. My question is on the mobile. What is the mobile? Is that...
So, right now, our crews, at the end of the day, we have, I should have brought a copy of our time cards, but basically, each road and bridge in Culver has a segment number, and they, at the end of the day, they have to fill out on their time card where they spent all of their time. With the mobile feature, they'll be able to do that in real time out in the field, and then essentially save the time at the end of the day and be able to actually work longer throughout the day, rather than coming back at the end of the day and having to fill that time card out. It'll just keep track of it throughout the day versus having to do it at the end of the day.
Great, great. So, they'll be able to take that mobile and say, I spent four hours grading this part, and then the rest of my time is, do they include like the travel back to the shop, that type of thing, or is it just for that job?
The travel, the way we do it is all, you know, the travel to that job is billed to the segment, and then say you switch segments during the course of the day, that travel time to that next segment is billed to that segment, and then travel back is billed to the segment as well.
I'll get with you after the meeting, learn a little more about it.[1700.53]
the, the segment, and then say you switch segments during the course of the day, that travel time to that next segment is billed to that segment, and then travel back is billed to the segment as well.
I'll, I'll get with you after meeting, learn a little more about it.
Absolutely.
Only one other question.
Follow-up.
And that'd be for Lori.
Lori, Ms. Lori.
Sorry about up and down. Lori, have you seen this program, and do you have any recommendations?
Both Cassidy, who actually used to work at the local place in Rapid that built the highway software, he's looked at it, and he agrees and says that this is, this is probably their best and most efficient and cost-effective software. They were looking at another one, and it was very expensive and very complex, and I think this is gonna work really slick for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We were looking at a program called Cartograph, kind of the best of the best, basically, but really not cost-effective, little over double the cost of what this one is, and a little too complex for what we were looking for.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I know at this point, Ms. Lori was talking, since I've been here, about getting some of the departments their own software and moving forward because it'd be more efficient and more effective, so I'm glad we're getting that done, and you're meeting some of those goals that you were saying would be efficient and effective for IT and also the departments, so thank you, Ms. Lori, for kind of pushing this forward with our new superintendent and our group, so I think it'll make a difference for you and make a difference for them, so thank you for your work.
Thank you, and the software developers are very excited about going this direction, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Sir?
I'd make a motion that we accept the proposal from Pub Works for the highway software replacement for a total of $43,850, and with the ongoing annual fee of $5,900.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Drew, second by Ross Connect, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is 164th Avenue Bridge.
Alright.
We can put those on the dais, the, the options, Ms. Holly? We do have four options today, but we do have one more that Superintendent Miller would like to speak about. If you want to speak about that first, Joe, just so they know they have another option and where we could go.
Yeah, so yesterday, oh, I don't know, 10, 11 o'clock, we, we reached out to Jack Corr from Corr Construction, who did our Bradsky Road Bridge. He also, he installed a temporary bridge on that road for a bypass. He has that temporary bridge sitting in his yard, it's not quite long enough to do the 67-foot span, it's only 60 feet. He came in yesterday, and he's got some designs and some plans for a concrete structure. It's a single-lane span, or a single-lane, single-span concrete structure. He said to install a new one, it'd be about $140,000 to $160,000, and then to, that's a new bridge, not the, the one that was used on the Bradsky Road project. To install the, the temporary bridge that was in, that was used on the Bradsky Road Bridge would be approximately $100,000, give or take, depending on what it takes to, to add decking units and get that to be the correct length for that span. And then the timeframe, excuse me, the timeframe, he said he could get it done by the end of July.
Thank you. So we did go out there for it, too, or some of us did, some were out of town, and thank you for you and your crew bringing us out there, and the sheriff letting us use the vehicles to get there, and we had lots of talk with the neighbors, which we appreciate all the neighbors being out there with us, so at this point, we did tell them we were gonna bring back some options today, so any discussion on the options from the commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Joe, with this one that you just brought forward, that he has this other one, you're saying they could do that for, they have to expand it about six foot, and you call it a temporary, but is it, would it be, it would actually be permanent?
That is correct. It's, I call it temporary, because that's, they are used in temporary situations, it's actually a prefabricated bridge, meaning that it's fabricated off-site and trucked in in segments.
Okay, because that's what I was, when I was reading through a lot of this stuff, that's, there's a lot of companies doing the off-site construction and building them in, but the word temporary kind of throws you off, you know what I'm saying?
Correct.
So this would, would, would this meet the load limits that they'd need required out there?
It would be an HL-93 load, which is a legal semi-load, I believe it's 36-ton. I'm not quite, I believe it's 36-ton, Bill or engineer might be able to speak a little bit more to that if need be.
Okay.
He is here today as well.
One last follow-up. Total cost for that, that one, I just wrote down $100,000, but it could be $150,000?
We don't know what the cost, you know, Jack expressed, you know, it could be, could be expanded to, to meet that, that span, but he's not, he wasn't sure, he didn't want to throw a hard number out there as far as what it would take to, to get that done.
I was looking at your other options, and it looks like the cheapest one we got is $255,000, $255,000, so you still, there's still a leniency of $155,000 from the lowest bid on, on replacing the fabric, and that's the fabricated single-lane structure.
Correct, and I, I do want to point out, on the, those prefabricated single-lane structures, there is a 25% contingency, Brandon, our engineer, put that report together, and that contingency is just any unforeseen construction costs, so the hard number would be about that $200,000 mark.
Okay.
Thank you, and I think the Bradsky Bridge, the temporary, temporary one, if we bought it, was 100, if we used the Corr Construction, was 40 to 60, 140 to 160, wasn't it?
So Corr Construction is the contractor that did the Bradsky Road Bridge.
Right.
They have the temporary structure that was used for a detour there.
Right.
So if we use the Bradsky Road structure, or the temporary bridge that was used there and put it in permanently.
Right.
Be that $100,000 mark, give or take, and he's got designs that he could get a new concrete structure, prefabricated structure, to put into that place for 140 to 160.
Okay, just so we're clear, where, what those two differences are, discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Joe, on option three, the quadruple barrel box culvert, is, would that provide two lanes or only one, like the other options?
That would be only one lane.
Only one lane as well, okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
In any event, any of these choices, Joe, are, is there anything left of that old bridge system that can be reused, such as the end abutments?
It appears that way, they, I got the, I believe the bridge inspection was used, or was in the packet for last commission meeting, reading through it, there is a cup, some washing away of the, I believe it's the south abutment, and one of them is kind of leaning one way or the other, so that stuff would have to be fixed, but most likely some of those abutments, some portions of the abutments could be reused, yes.
So these, these proposals, are they making the assumption that they're gonna be able to use those abutments and not have to redevelop new ones?
At least one of them, yes.
Okay, and the next question, do these estimates take into account of removing the old bridge, and what do we do with the old bridge once it's removed?
Um, that's a, that's been a question, you know, most of the time, the old bridge would be just hauled back to the county highway department and, you know, either scrapped, or, or if somebody were, were to want that, you know, it could be, be auctioned off at our surplus auction or whatever, if somebody wanted to, to use it, I guess, for what's left of it. As far as getting it out of there, Corr Construction would be able to get that out of there, and then with the other prefabricated bridges, we would have to hire a contractor to, to set those, so we would just put in that contract that, the contractor that's setting that modular bridge, or the pre-manufactured bridge, take the old one out.
And then the Bradsky Bridge, is that basically Class C or concrete construction?
Yeah, it is a concrete precast structure.
So what would the difference of that bridge be than the temporary bridge that we were gonna, looking at to lease?
It's the same bridge.
Okay.
It's, it's the exact same bridge.
Okay, and that's one lane, too?
Correct.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Do we have any motions, or, or do we want to see that bid from Corr Construction and, and?
Good night.
Move forward on that, and just continue this?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
I guess, Ron, with Ron's comments, I'd like to know, get a little better estimate myself, too, because I think I'd like to know it, the costs of removing and doing it, if that's our best bet, and I think we need to have those numbers for the total of what, what we're gonna be to make a good decision.
So Joe, do you understand, we probably will continue this, and then you will bring back the numbers, remember for the $100,000 maybe bridge, and then the Corr Construction, making sure they have all, you know, everything in there, built into their costs of removing the bridge, and if they can save some of the pieces and parts of the old bridge, you're okay with that?
Yes, and I do want to point out, what I handed you here at the beginning is our, our guide for going to bid and some exceptions in there, there is a, an emergency clause, no, I believe it's on page five, there, up at the top, emergency purchases, which would allow us to, we wouldn't have to go to bid for this, from my understanding. If that's the, if that's the route we want to go, we will, we will chase that down and make sure that's a for-sure answer, but preliminary, it looks like we would not have to go to bid for this.
And we do need a bridge here, so can we call, Holly, if we want to do like an emergency meeting, kind of, of the board, could we call that? If we get those answers and the boards wants to move forward, because that'd be another two weeks then, and how, how fast could you get those bids and those, that information to us, Joe?
And Jack, you know, he's, when we talked to him yesterday, he seemed like he could get them to us pretty quick, if that's the, the direction that we want to go.
Is that a possibility of the board that we'd like to call emergency meeting on this, so we could get this bridge done, or what's your?
I think this, the sooner the better.
Okay, we're okay with that? Okay, so Holly, we, we just continue this, and then we just call the meeting later, is that how we do that?
Correct, if it's the wish of the board, you're here next Tuesday for equalization hearings, we could call a meeting, start at 8:15.
Okay.
If, Joe, you think we can get it out and noticed by next Tuesday, otherwise, we can call it at any time, I'm just thinking the next time you guys are together.
That's a good suggestion, Ms. Holly, if that works for Joe.
I will reach out to Jack, and I'll let Ms. Holly know by the end of the day.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Sir?
Joe, are we gonna have any follow-up with the neighbors out there, so they know what we decided to do today, so that they know that we're working and getting some type of a?
They're here, Ron.
Improved approach?
They're in the back.
Okay.
I, I have reached out to each one of them after we all met last week, was it last week, I think, after that, and kind of the direction we were going, so I am keeping them in the loop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we do have a motion to continue, is there, I'm sorry, we don't have a motion to continue?
I make a motion to continue.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew.
Second.
Moved by Drew, second by Ross Connect, any other discussion? Did you folks want to speak? Sorry, come on up. I forgot about you guys in the back till I saw Mr. Lynn back there. We are continuing this, but they did come to speak today.
Yeah, I didn't fill out the paperwork.
That's okay, you're good.
I'm Rob Schaefer, I'm the only person that actually lives on that other side on the south, and it is our home, and right now, we're crossing down the bridge and back up the bridge with all of our groceries and such, so with Joe involved, hopefully, we can blade that road just until we can get a bridge. That's, that's my main concern, is getting in and out of there.
Okay, so the meeting will be next week at 8:15, if you folks want to come to see what our decision's going to be, if I'm correct, if that works out, so just in case, we'll make sure, I, I know Rob's number, Mr. Lynn's number, I can call them, too, if, if we need to.
Next Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I appreciate you guys.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I, I believe when we were out there doing that personal inspection, the highway department did agree to smooth that road off a little bit, when the conditions are safe, so that we don't tear our equipment up.
I understand.
And another concern is that if we hit that with, too hard with a grade, we're gonna start pulling up some of that vegetation, and you pull that vegetation up, then you're not gonna have anything, because that's just another concern, so they can't get too radical out there, because that vegetation is holding, holding a lot of that road together right now.
Well, I built the road coming in from the other end myself, at my expense, so I know what you're dealing with.
Yes, sir.
But one other thing that I wanted to say is, I was kind of disappointed the other day that the barriers were taken down at Brunzes. Now, all that's gonna do is, is get our kids out there mud bogging on that road. If they don't understand that it's not a through, a throughway now, they're just gonna drive in all the way to the bridge.
Joseph.
Correct, and we took those barriers down, so then, you know, when the, the time allows that, you will be able to get in and out of there without, you know, because it is illegal to cross those barriers and go around those barriers, that's the reason we took those down, it is still signed as a minimum maintenance road, it's a public right-of-way, so if it's not closed, we can't, you know, we can't legally close it.
Without their permission to close it.
That is correct.
So is there a way to put like a temporary gate on that road with padlocks for the people who need that road?
It's a section line, Rob.
So you're?
Yes, sir.
So mostly, all we can hope for is to scratch it up every now and then.
Joseph.
If we need.
To scratch it up, but to, by meaning?
Run, run the maintainer down and back.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I've got a daughter's car out there that needs to come back out of there.
All right, I think we're good, so we're moving forward? We're good?
Yep.
Okay.
If the board wants to schedule that special meeting now, you could make that as part of the motion to continue until that time and date.
Do we need to bring that recent?
Just a friendly amendment to that motion to continue.
Are we okay with the friendly amendment for April 23rd, right? Yes, at 8:15?
Madam Chair, we have another speaker.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Lynn?
I'm Lynn Smith, I just have one question, is the width of the, this temporary, or the temporary bridge?
It'd be a 14-foot wide, I believe the structures we got, there are a couple different options.
Prefabricated.
Prefabricated, yes, sorry.
That's gonna be a permanent bridge, guys.
What was, what was the old one?
The old, I don't recall off the top of my head here.
Mark, do you know what size the old one was? Mark Shock?
My only concern would be with getting equipment across.
So one of the options?
The old board, the old bridge was, just, just barely get some, some of my equipment crossed, I just wanted to.
I think we talked about heavy equipment and, and what was gonna come across that bridge, and we talked about the prefabricated bridges, and I thought they could take, if I'm correct, the different equipment that the ranchers and farmers use across it, Joe?
I believe that, so the existing is, oh, I'm trying to find that here, but the preman, or, excuse me, the prefabricated bridges that we have introduced there, there's one that is 14-foot wide, and then the other one would be 16-foot wide.
Okay.
As far as the, Mark, did you find that yet?
I haven't.
We got the bridge inspection here, it should be on here, but.
The quietest it's ever been in here.
What's your head?
It's the quietest it's ever been in here.
No, you've continued this, but it'd be kind of nice to know that information. Mark?
Mark Shock, Pennington County Highway, it says 16-foot wide on the existing bridge.
And we can do a 14 or a 16, and then we will have those specs for 14 or 16 next week?
Correct, and you actually have those on, on the, the bridge or the report that we submitted with the, the packet.
Okay.
And then, yeah, with Corr's bid or proposal, we would, we would have those.
Thank you. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you.
Okay, alrighty, let's move on then, and if that's okay, we do have Board of Adjustments, not till 10:30, is that okay, Board, if we make a motion to go in executive session?
Did you, you guys need to do the vote, though? You didn't do all in favor.
We didn't vote it, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Motion was made by Drew, second by Ross Connect, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That'd be a continuance, and then the next meeting would be emergency meeting, 8:15, Tuesday, the 23rd. Okay. We okay going in executive session? Holly, one question, is the man here for the tabling?
Commissioners, I want to back up just a second on, on that road. Typically, we put motions on if that's the direction of the board, you want them to run equipment and break open that road, just if, if that's the board's wishes, to get it in motion form, so we don't have any confusion.
I'd, I'd make the friend, well, we have to bring it back up.
No, just a new motion, sir.
Just a new motion.
Joe, tell me what it ta- Joe, tell me what it takes to do the what they're talking about for making that?
So generally, that's left up to the Highway Superintendent and the Highway Department to grade it when we have the the conditions are right. You know, that section line is a minimum maintenance road. So we do go in there once once or twice a year when the conditions are right and when when we are able to get in there to do that maintaining.
Okay.
So if the the board wishes, we we would seek a motion, I guess, I'll leave that up.
One more question. What do you mean by maintaining? So what are you going to do to?
We would run a motor grader down there to smooth out the ruts and make it passable with a with a vehicle.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner La Croix.
So you're looking, I I'm just trying to clarify a motion.
Yes, sir.
So I can make one. You're looking for clarification because this is minimal. So you're looking for some clarification that you know you're going, this could be a year long, you may have to go back more than once.
Because of the situation and the bridge being collapsed, that the board fully intends to do that with that road in addition to working on the bridge itself. So just just clarifying so everybody's on the same page.
I would make a motion to approve additional work on that section line as needed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right.
Commissioners, we have tried multiple times to reach this lien release applicant. He is not answering the phone and we're not sure if the message is actually going through. So again, it's my recommendation that you act on it or you continue it. We can try again, but we haven't been successful.
Holly, tell me what number that was again, I have it.
Uh, lien is? Yes, number sixteen.
All right, we need to bring sixteen off the table. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to bring it, number sixteen, off the table.
Do we have a second? So Commissioner Drews, DeSanto, to bring it off the table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number sixteen, please, the lien request, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we deny the the lien release.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That's okay, executive session. Do we have a motion?
Move to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion, a second, to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we're on the Board of Adjustment. Where's PJ? Still? Actually, while we're waiting, I'll go ahead and read this one more time. The Commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete a speaker request form located in bookshelves in the back of the chambers and return it to Ms. Holly Hennies. She sits to the left of the dais here. And we will take that and call you up when those numbers are called. So PJ, we're on Board of Adjustment, sir.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to go into Board of Adjustment?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
For move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to go into Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. PJ, please.
All right, thank you. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. The only item on the Board of Adjustment today is variance eighteen twenty-one for Jolly Lane Greenhouse, Tim Simon is the agent, and he is in the audience today if you have any questions for him. The applicant is looking to reduce the minimum required lots or setback for the eastern property line of the subject property here outlined in yellow from twenty-five feet to zero feet for an extension to an existing greenhouse. This is an aerial taken last year, the subject property there on the left, and then also the drawing from the applicant showing where the addition would be on the existing greenhouse. This is the Jolly Greenhouse operation. Majority of the operation actually exists inside city limits, but this portion and another portion that the property owner or the landowner owns, excuse me, is located inside the county. He does also own Lot Two, which is the adjacent property to the to the east. This was routed through the interdepartmental review and no items of concern came back. The Highway Department did note that instead of doing the variance, consolidating the lots is a preferable course of action. Staff does not disagree with that. The applicant is not is not looking to consolidate the properties and he's also located inside the platting jurisdiction of the city of Rapid City. So that's why he's applied for the variance today.
Thank you.
The zoning ordinance requires the Board of Adjustment to determine four specific criteria are met when considering a variance. The first is that specific circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or siting exist. Staff has verified through a site visit that the additional space, that there is additional space available to the north side of the of the existing greenhouse, but it may impede the existing operation that the landowner has in place. Whoops. The second item of note is that the variance is not granted use, which is otherwise excluded from this particular district. If this variance application was approved, it would not grant a use, which is excluded in a general commercial district. The third item is that due to specific circumstances or existing condition, strict application of zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. If this was not approved, the applicant would have to meet the twenty-five foot setback and look and find another location on the property for possibly an additional greenhouse or the new extension. The last item is that granting a variance would not be contrary to the public interest and is harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinances. Granting a setback does not appear to be contrary to public interest. We have not received any phone calls of complaint about this specific request. And with that, the individual also did some platting through the city of Rapid or had done some platting years ago with the city of Rapid City. When they originally came in with the application for the extension, we noticed on the plat there was a note for setbacks and there was also easements. Normally setbacks aren't put on plats because you have to then go back and vacate the plat to take that off instead of just coming in and getting a variance. So since the applicant applied back in two thousand and eighteen, they have been working with the city of Rapid City to vacate those notes on the plat. The utility easement is vacated and the city has confirmed that the vacation of the notes on the plat are going to be vacated as well. That's why we couldn't move forward with this variance because we had to wait till that stuff was done. So with that, if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance eighteen twenty-one, staff does not recommend any conditions be included.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Just to clarify, the setback is against up against his own property, correct?
Correct.
I recommend approval.
Motion to approve? Is there a second? Motion by DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, to come out of Board of Adjustment?
To move.
Moved by La Croix, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, consent agenda, PJ?
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following two items. Item B, second reading of rezone nineteen oh one and comprehensive plan amendment nineteen oh one for Fattah Boys Incorporated, Bob Fuchs is the agent, and approval has been recommended. Item C, first reading and public hearing of rezone nineteen oh two and comprehensive plan amendment nineteen oh two for Borghlin Historical Center Incorporated, Dwayne Pankatz the owner, Ken Nash is the agent. It's been recommended to be continued to the May seventh, two thousand and nineteen Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, PJ. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on the consent agenda B and C? Is there any commissioner that would like to pull item B or C from the agenda? If not, motion, please.
To approve.
Moved by Drews, second by DeSanto, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Regular agenda item D through H.
Thank you.
Do you please? Vacation of section line, Michael Fessler.
Good morning, Brittany Molliter, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item D is a request to vacate one thousand three hundred and twenty feet of section line right of way. There are two properties that abut this section line right of way, both with existing residences. And they're both zone low density, one is zone low density residential district and consists of five acres. One is zone general agriculture district and consists of five acres. In order to vacate a section line, there are petition requirements. It does require signatures from one percent of the votes cast in the last gubernatorial election. The Pennington County Auditors Department did verify that four hundred and seventeen signatures were submitted to the auditor's office on March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. In addition, on this property, this board has seen a variance request for this property. And at that time, in two thousand and eighteen, the board did direct the property owner to go back and vacate that north portion of the section line right of way. The property does abut U.S. Forest Service land to the south. The Forest Service did make comment that they didn't, they don't acknowledge section line right of ways on National Forest Service lands. However, they did not object to them vacating the section line on the north portion of that section line. There was a variance that was already approved on this property in nineteen eighty-seven to allow for the house to be constructed fourteen feet to the south property line, but it didn't take into consideration the encroachment into the section line right of way. So the Board of Adjustment did approve that in nineteen eighty-seven. And then in two thousand and eighteen, like I said, the board did continue the variance request in order for the applicant to vacate this section line right of way. So staff is recommending approval of the vacation of this section line with one condition.
Is there a motion or discussion?
Madam Chair. Say, Brittany, can you, in our packet, we have a, it looks like a blown up zoning map? Can you put that up there for us, please?
Is that the one you wanted, Commissioner? Or is it the zoning? I think you had it up there.
I don't know, I'm assuming it would be.
This one?
Brittany, yeah, you had it.
I've got one that's a little bit more blown up. Just basically it zeros in on the two lots themselves, but when, it might be easier for some of the commissioners when they, when we go through these packets, that normally when a section line is closed, it's to, it's not going to, hmm, let's see, I want to see this. As a section line is primarily used for access and utility, when the terrain is rigid enough where you, it's not, it's not financially feasible for that section line to be eroded or put an easement in there. I was just saying, the future for something like this, a topography map might help a little bit more.
Okay.
That would tell me that, hey, we can go ahead and vacate it because it's never going to be financially feasible to turn this into a future access or put a utility line in.
Okay, I think it was in the analysis in the language, but there wasn't a map showing that.
I'm a visual guy, so.
Sure, okay.
I had to read a lot more to find it in the analysis.
All right, perfect.
Did the applicant want to speak?
He is actually not here right now. He is available by phone if you guys do want to speak with him. If you have any concerns regarding that request.
Care. This this was discussed, in my opinion, in length back in August of two thousand and eighteen. And I voted no on that variance at the time and I'm going to vote no on it again. And the reason being is because even if we vacate the section line, people have to know that, and I confirmed this with Brittany, I believe, at the time, that a person can just literally walk through your house. You can't, you can't keep people off of a section line. That's the way it is. And 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 I don't think that it's appropriate to grant a vacation when there's going to be a building there block, basically blocking a section line where somebody could literally say, hey, that's public property, I can walk right through there. I don't think that it that it should work that way, frankly.
So Brittany, if you vacate a section line, you're vacating a section line, they could still go on a vacated section line because it's supposed to be public? I thought it becomes non-public anymore and the owner actually, that becomes part of their property again.
That's my understanding of the vacation according to statute. Now, on this property, they would still, the southern portion of that section line, the southern thirty-three feet, would not be vacated and that's on National Forest Service land, so they still would be able to access through there. So if he does his proposed addition, that would have to be of the understanding that he would be closer to that essentially public right of way.
Right. I mean, people could, you know, that the, if I'm seeing this right, the house but right up against the National Forest Service part of the section line that isn't vacated. And so this guy could have people trashpass it on as not his property, on National Forest Service property, literally right, they could literally put a tent up right next to his house if they wanted to. Or park their car right next to his house. Or race by on motorcycles right next to his house. You know what I'm saying? So it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
I can see where Mark's at, but you got to realize that all that land to the south of that section line is National Forest as well. So if somebody wants to put a tent up or they need to get from point A to point B, they've got a whole National Forest to do that. So I don't consider this to be an adverse situation.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion by Ross Connect. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no by Commissioner DeSanto. Item E, please.
Item E is a layout plat request to create lots one and two of Thorsonson Benson Ranch subdivision. The applicant Julie Benson Wilber has applied to create lots one and two. As the property exists today, it's zone general agriculture district. It consists of seventy-nine point three seven acres. The access to the property is currently off Nemo Road. The special flood hazard area on the property is not studied and there are no structures on this property. However, the subject property does contain three developmental developmental lots, which have always been bought and sold as one land unit. The creation of these two new lots and the remaining unplanted balance will nullify the three developmental lot status. The proposed lots, Lot One, would be five acres and a rezone or lot size variance would be required. Lot Two would consist of forty-one point seven four acres and then there would be an unplanted balance. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process and there was one item of note that came back from the Pennington County Highway Department. They did comment that the existing field entrance approach on Lot Two has not been permitted and approach permits will be required for both lots. The proposed Lot One and the unplanted remaining balance will require rezones or lot size variance as stated before, as they are both under the allotted acreage for the current zoning of general agriculture. For the purposes of a layout plat, however, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request and staff is recommending approval of layout plat nineteen zero five with eight conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Brittany. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Madam Chair. Brittany, when you say the access is off of Nemo Road, are you talking about the larger parcel?
Both Lot One and Lot Two, but yes, the larger parcel.
So if this is subdivided, they will have legal and physical access to the smaller lot off of Nemo Road?
Pending an approved approach permit from the Pennington County Highway Department.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that both parcels had legal and physical access.
Right, and where that is, it's not depicted on the plat and that would be between them and the Highway Department when they.
Thank you.
Did the applicant want to speak on this? Not here.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by La Croix. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item F, Lori Lippert.
PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department, again. Item F is layout plat nineteen oh six to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot Ten R and Lot Eleven of Broome Graff subdivision. The applicant is Lauren Lippert. Landowners are Gordon and Connie Howie. And the subject properties contain one hundred and thirty-five point six six acres and they're zone general agriculture. and thirty-five point six-six acres, and they're zone general agriculture. Essentially, what the applicant is looking to do is take lot ten, which is fifty-five point six-six acres, and an unplanted balance of eighty acres, and create lot ten R at just over thirty-five acres, and lot eleven of over sixty-eight acres with the remainder left unplanted. Lot ten R is proposed, the thirty-five point four-two-five acres would not meet the forty acre minimum lot size for general agriculture property, and either a rezone application would need to be approved or a lot size variance for that property. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. County Highway Department noted that future development of either of those parcels will require the construction of an access road from Antelope Creek Road along the section line on the south and the forty-foot easement on the west, in addition to the approach permits being approved. The county environmental planning supervisor noted that there is a special flood hazard area on the subject property, and flood plain development permits will be required for any work in the special flood hazard area. The county environmental planner also noted that if they wish to install septic systems, that all rules and regulations from section two oh-four J of the Pennington County zoning ordinance must be followed. The Register of Deeds and Department of Equalization also noted some concern with the ownership certificates on the plats, and those will be also included as conditions of approval with the layout plat request. And lastly, the other item that came up is West River Electric would like to see a twenty-five-foot easement located along the property, along the lot lines for overhead construction that may commence at some point. With that, this is a layout plat, and staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as a layout plat is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision. Planning Commission and planning staff recommends approval of layout plat nineteen oh-six with twelve conditions.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this? Not? Board discussion or motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ross Connect, second by La Croix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item G.
Item G is first reading and public hearing of rezone nineteen oh-three and comprehensive plan amendment nineteen oh-three for Dwayne Anderson to rezone forty acres from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district, and to amend the Pennington County comprehensive plan to change the future land use from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district. The applicant is in the audience today, if you have any questions. Basically, the applicant is looking to subdivide the subject property. You can kind of see here, it's almost already naturally subdivided, they have a fence, so they're looking to kind of create two lots out of this, out of this one. This property is also located in the plating jurisdiction for New Underwood. New Underwood City Council has already approved the subdivision of the plat contingent on either a lot size variance or a rezone that the applicant is pursuing at this time. This was routed through the interdepartmental review, and no items of concern came up. And with that, staff would recommend, staff and the Planning Commission would recommend approval of rezone nineteen oh-three and comprehensive plan amendment nineteen oh-three.
Thank you, PJ. Move by DeSanto for approval.
Second.
Second by La Croix. Any discussion from the audience? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item H, please.
Okay, item H, this one's a little different. This is first reading and public hearing of plan unit development nineteen oh-one from Brink Construction Incorporated, BCI Properties LLC for Zane Brink. The request is to rezone thirty-eight point four-eight acres from general agriculture district to a plan unit development district to create an apprenticeship training facility for the linemen of Brink Construction. The reason that this one's a little bit different than what you normally see is it's an overlay rezoning. So, we've done this in the past, but I don't think that this sitting board as a whole has seen it before, where the underlying zoning of general agriculture stays in place, but there is plant, but it is rezoned temporarily to plan unit development for the length of the use of that PUD. So, the applicant is looking to build on this property that you see here, this facility. He's looking to use these existing structures and reconfigure those for the uses of a training facility, also build a conference center on the property, remove the single wide mobile home which exists on the property in red, and then also build simulated apparatus that would simulate what the linemen were going, would experience, I assume, while they're out performing their job. It is not electrified, just came up during the Planning Commission meeting, I believe Commissioner Ross Connect had asked that question, if there would be any noise, but since there'll be no electricity running through, Mr. Brink said that there would be no noise from this facility. There have been no letters of complaint or concern about the actual rezone. The only phone call we got was from the landowner across the street making sure that the rezone didn't affect the existing width of the approach, because that's what she uses to turn her vehicles around in. Other than that, we haven't received any complaints. The applicant has also indicated that the highest structure on the property would be over sixty-five feet tall. In a PUD, there is no height limit unless it is approved by the Board of Commission, and in general agriculture, there is no height limit at all. So, this property has both of those, so the applicant is requesting that height for the items on his property. Mr. Brink cannot be here today, but there is a representative from Brink Construction, if you have any questions. This was routed through the interdepartmental review, and no items of concern came up. We also made sure that the Rapid City Regional Airport, Ellsworth, and also Box Elder, because it's located in their plating jurisdiction, were okay, and none of them have had any concerns. With the PUD, per our ordinance, there are some items they consider in, with their requests, that it is, has an appropriate relationship, relationship to the surrounding area. Most of the area around the subject property is either agriculture or, or there's a single residence on them. The closest residence to the property is less than half a mile away. As far as plan unit developments, there are two other plan unit developments within two miles of the subject property. That the, there are applicant provisions for internal roads. The applicant is looking to utilize the existing road system in there. Again, he's only looking at having sixteen students and two instructors on the property at any one time. He's also looking to expand the parking facility. Per our ordinance, he would be required to have, I believe it was eight parking spaces, and he's looking to build an additional twenty to what's already there. He's also looking to have, use some of the, see if it's pictured here. You can see some of the storage units, kind of the boxes or trailers for training equipment for the, for the proposed facility. Also, that there will be functional open space on the property. The reason for the overlay district is the applicant doesn't want to lose the agriculture use of the property. He still wants to run cows on it, and he still wants to be able to hay it. And as you can see in the proposed drawing here, that most of the activity is gonna occur on the west and the north property line for the lineman training facility, keeping most of the property open for that ag use that the applicant is looking for. The applicant may also have to put up some screening on the property if there are some complaints, but right now, there's some natural vegetation that screens the property to, on the west and to the north. Other than that, again, staff has not received any complaints with this. This type of use is like a vocational school. It is not listed in any of our zoning districts except for general commercial. But zoning this property general commercial, we would be, we would consider that as spot zoning, as the closest general commercial is over six and a half miles away. Hence why the applicant, applicant has gone with the PUD. The applicant would, and if not, if not going with the PUD, they would have had to do multiple conditional use permits and variances. With this PUD, the applicant is able to request in an appropriate way for this use, and also maintain the agricultural use on the subject property. And with that, the Planning Commission and planning staff would recommend approval of plan unit development, PUD nineteen oh-one, with seventeen conditions.
Do we have motion or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Zane indicated the last time we were here that this facility would not create noise nor smell or any adversities, and he, I also, if I understood it right, that once this is terminated, the PUD, then the zoning reverts back to general ag. So.
Correct.
Minimal, minimal impact, in my opinion.
Correct, and all this, all the items that you see pictured here for the training would be removed except for the, except for the buildings? Correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
You know, this is a, a local business that's here, but at the same time, they provide services in many other states, so it's not just local, this, this is a major business. I think this is very innovative and creative on Brink's part, to bring this training to this area on property that they own. I don't see any downsides to this at all. And I just want to applaud them for thinking about bringing that here where their main, main business office, I believe, is located, but we appreciate it for economic development, and I think that for the training purposes, they'll probably be bringing people in from many other areas for this training to be conducted right here.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion?
Move to approve.
And a motion to approve by Ross Connect, and a second by La Croix. Just one question, how are the roads coming into here, because they're gonna have sixteen students going in and out? I mean, can you show me the road connections to this property?
Well.
And it's off of what? Is it off?
Sorry, I'll give that road name on here for you.
Sorry, PJ.
No, it's okay. Highway fourteen sixteen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is items from the chair and commission members. Pennington County Wheel Tax, Commissioner Drews, please.
Thank you. This is not a action item on the agenda, this is informational only, and if I can, I'll give just a little bit of history as to where this comes about from. Going back over a number of years, counties and the, their association approached the legislature on giving them other funding avenues other than just the property tax for funding local government at the county level. And they tried several different methods. One of them was a tax on, extra tax on alcohol for helping cost of law enforcement in counties, et cetera. Most of those efforts all failed, but at one point in time, the legislature did adopt a, a state law, essentially giving the counties the option of creating a wheel tax. This wheel tax doesn't necessarily need to be in addition to property taxes, in fact, it could be a replacement if that, if this, if the desire was, was there, and if the money was not, additional money was not needed. However, during the course of the year since this has been in effect, Pennington County has chose not to take this option and not to create the wheel tax. There was an attempt made a few years ago, which was denied at the, at the ballot box. But at the same time, I think of the sixty-six counties, I think there's either fifty-nine or sixty of them that did take this option. And, and the whole thing comes down now to the fact that a few years ago, the state, in order to try to simplify some things for local governments, they created what's called the BIG fund, B-I-G fund, for road and bridge. And what they did on that is they tried to take what normally would be passed through dollars from feds, federal government, to local entities, and to keep those funds for state projects instead of putting those at the local level because of the rules and regs that you have to live by if you're utilizing those funds. And so, that, all the funds for road and bridge then would come through the state instead of through the federal avenue. However, one of the things they put in place on that is saying, the only way a county could qualify for these funds is if they had already or had, put into place a wheel tax. And so, my point is, is that we need to create the wheel tax for Pennington County. We are paying into these funds that we can't get back out at this point in time. Obviously, we get some road and bridge money, but there's, the BIG fund, per se, is set up so that we cannot receive it. My intent would be to essentially give notice that this is something that I plan on working on. I don't plan on bringing this back before this commission, probably for a year. I would hope to take this, if, if we're allowed to, take this directly to the ballot to save those. I know that there's gonna be those that are in opposition to it, but instead of having them refer something, I'm taking it directly to the ballot. I don't want to create a special election if possible. I would like to be able to put this on a ballot where there's already an election that's scheduled. So, that's my intent. And as I said before, doesn't necessarily mean that this is all additional funds to the county. It could be some funds, it could be literally a replacement of other funds.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. Discussion, board?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
Gary, I really appreciate you stepping up and taking that challenge. You know, that, that has been a, a challenge for our community. I mean, if we just had a bridge go down, I can't, I'd have to deal with Joe, and then about how many bridges, a hundred and twenty-four do we have in our? Hundred and twenty-eight, and we got, I can't remember the percentages of our bridges that are over, that were last built in nineteen seventy-two from the flood, that were supposed to be temporary, that are still holding up.
Come on, have Joe.
Do you mind if I have Joe give a little bit?
That'd be fine.
Because I think it's back information.
Oh, seeing this was on the agenda, and I invited Bill, our engineer, he's done some extensive research on this, so I'll allow him to.
On, on the roads and the bridges, if you can give us some information on that, Bill?
Sure, Bill Belk, civil engineer, Highway Department. The average age of our bridges is forty-eight years, and forty-four, I believe it was, I got it written down, yeah, forty-four were replaced after the flood in the seventy-two to seventy-four timeframe. Those bridges were pretty much designed for about a fifty-year life, and fifty years is coming pretty close. So, we're gonna have a lot of bridges that are gonna need a lot of work. In fact, out of the hundred and twenty-eight bridges that we have, only ten don't need any work, according to the inspection reports for the last two years. Now, some are fairly minor, it might just be signage, but some are fairly major. We've got five that need to be replaced, including the one sixty-fourth. So, there's about a hundred and thirteen others that need some rehabilitation work. And I did some rough estimates, I just looked at past projects that we've done to come up with a, and group the different types of repairs into like timber repairs, steel repairs, et cetera, and put a price tag on each one, and I come up with over eleven million dollars of work needed on our bridges. And, of course, the longer you wait, the more they deteriorate, the more it's gonna cost down the road.
Thanks, Bill. I mean, this is what I'm getting at, and that's why I appreciate Gary bringing this forward. I mean, this, this isn't something that this, this commission takes lightly. I mean, we've got some old infrastructure that, that's in need of repair, and there is an option that we have that's available, or could be available, to help string them along, and, and help residents who are now have to drive, what is, an hour and a half around because something, you know, they all of a sudden fail. We have to go by priority by the number of people these bridges serve, the ones who wins get priority over the other ones. And that's kind of like where we're at. I mean, we, we got to narrow, you guys have already got a list of the high priority, I'm sure.
Kind of prioritize them, yeah. We looked a lot of them, you know, where are their dead-end roads, and residents would just be cut off completely if a bridge went out.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
You know, you met, I put those numbers together last night myself. I said, on an average, if you take all the bridges in Pennington County, a hundred and twenty-eight, if you took that times a million, this is a hundred and twenty-eight million, just easy math. But then, that does not include the economic hardship on those people traveling. Now, the bridge at one sixty-fourth, granted, they lost a bridge, but that, to me, was minimal compared to losing a bridge between Hill City and Deerfield, going in the Rochford, for example, or going to Deerfield. I mean, we lose a bridge here, that becomes an economic hardship, and it's, so maybe a million dollars to fix the bridge, and, and some of those bridges could take up the two years to fix, so it's, it costs so much to fix the bridge, and then there's gonna be that temporary solution that we haven't figured into the equation, and then just the economic hardship on the citizens. And, and one of them said, when the citizens lose a bridge, be their main route where they're more heavily traveled, as they say, somewhere between Rochford and Hill City, I think they will understand that that wheel tax might not be that bad of an idea, because the counties just don't have the money to build million-dollar bridges at this point in time. And I've, I've heard, I've had folks contact me and say, look, we have eighteen wheelers, we have, we need the wheel tax, so, and I've also had a party contact me yesterday saying, we'll be totally adverse to wheel tax. And so, my position is, I'll listen to both sides, and I'm not making any decisions one way or another, but I'm gonna be open, and I want to listen to both sides. They can educate me, hopefully, I can educate them, and hopefully, we can all agree to agree.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross Connect. Oh, sorry, Commissioner. I thought I got it down. Commissioner DeSanto. I haven't recognized. I even recognized your voice Commissioner DeSanto, that's the bad part. Thank you sir.
I know that this article points out that only six thousand people showed up to vote for this, but people showed up to vote for it and that's the bottom line. Voters came and said they did not want the wheel tax. Now, I understand also that, that we need this money, that, that we have bridges that need to be fixed and, but I will point out, at the same time, we have made choices in this commission and past commissions to spend money where frankly, it was not a necessity. One of the ones that I will point out is South Rochford Road. People bought those, bought their houses on South Rochford Road when South Rochford Road was gravel road and for some reason or another, and I know it was sold as safety, but the truth is, well, I won't even go into that argument, I argued it enough when we were talking about it, but. We're going to turn around and spend, what Joe, six million dollars, something like eleven million, I can't remember, eleven million dollars on paving a road that didn't need to be paved. And that's eleven million dollars that could have been going to fix other bridges. We have to make better decisions as far as where we're spending our money. And, and another one that, one of the reasons I ran for Commissioner, Commissioner was because of the money that we were going to spend on, instead of just repairing a problem at the courthouse, turning it into a big major project that, to improve the facade and the look of the courthouse, we spent a lot of money there. Now, that frankly was, it was a want, it wasn't a need. And I don't know how to get around this bridge problem. I, I'm going to have to put my head to get in gear and, and think about how we, how we come up with this money, but. I will only vote for a wheel tax if there is language in that wheel tax that says that it will only be an offset of property tax. So we'll back off on the property tax and put the wheel tax if you're worried about putting additional pressure on the elderly that have fixed incomes. I understand that too. But I'm just, you know, and I guess another question I have, Gary is, does it, is it a minimum of three dollars or per wheel or could you do fifty cents a wheel and still qualify for the?
Gary, do you wish to answer the?
Well, quite frankly, I don't know the answer to that. If it's still at that, I think it started out at three dollars. I don't know if that's still, it's at two, I'm informed now, with a maximum of five.
Okay. Well, as Commissioner Ross Connect said, I'm going to listen to all sides of the story, but I have a very difficult time putting additional pressure on our taxpayers because frankly, some of the decisions that we've made where we would have extra money that could be spent towards now, what has become an emergency, where we spent the money on something that was, as I said, a want and not a need. So that's.
Clarify with that, with the wheel tax, it is, to qualify for the big grants, it would be, you could put a penny per wheel or whatever that must, or whatever the wheel tax is decided, just as long as we have a wheel tax, we can then apply for the big grants is our understanding.
Madam Chair. Commissioner LaCroy.
Just as a follow-up, you know, I under, there's been some great discussion here and I, I think I'm on the same boat as quite a few others. You know, I understand Mark's reviews, some funds can only be used for certain things.
Right.
I mean, so I think it's a little unfair to say that, I mean, I, I get you, I get your feeling, but that's, some funds are only used for that road or for that project and this is a little bit different. And, and that's what I was just, thanks for saying that Joe, because every conference that we've had down in Pierre, I ran into Doug, that's his name, Doug, Kenny Camp or?
Kinnenberg.
Kinnenberg.
Kinnenberg. And we've had this discussion about this and he, he is more than willing to come here and give a presentation because I think we got a lot more questions right now than we do, than you guys can probably answer. And I think we need more information in, in order to move forward and I think we could do that. So I think having Doug come back, finding what the requirements are. Gary was, I believe, was just bringing this forward to bring it to everybody's attention that we're going to start talking about it. And that's what, once we get the conversations going and get some more information, then, then we'll have more meetings and, and information. So that's why I support Gary in, in getting this out there. It's not waiting to the last minute. And there are going to be plenty of meetings on this moving forward and more information coming.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
On the South Rochford Road, I don't know, just, I don't know that the county's actually spending all that money. I thought there was some federal money involved and so to me, that was kind of an incentive. If the federal government wants to step up to help us fix a road, it's pretty hard not to take an opportunity to that. If the county said, we're going to do this and we're going to spend, we're not going to have any grants and you're going to do it on your own, then I'd have to probably think twice, but I was for the South Rochford Road, just simply because there was some federal money out there to help us work on that road and hopefully keep the maintenance down in the future.
Yeah, and it's, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, it's an eighty-twenty split on that one.
I believe so, it was under your mark for South Rochford.
So Bill, can you tell me how much, how many miles of road and usually we're looking at a road with four people on it in a district that would cost us four hundred thousand, four hundred and sixty-two thousand just to gravel a road instead of put a bridge there. So everybody's district is getting affected one way or another, whether, people don't think that their district, because it's in their district, they're not affected by, Mr. Brink might have his business in my district and get from that road to his business. So we're affected a lot of times by other ways if it, if it's not in our district. So bottom line is, can you tell me about some of our roads and how many miles of roads we have, because we've talked a lot about the bridges, but how about the roads that we have, Bill?
Got eight hundred and thirty-seven miles of road, of which five hundred and change are gravel and the remainder is, is asphalt.
And you'd be Joe. Thanks Joe, I'm just teasing you Joe. Bill?
I could pull up the spreadsheet, but yeah, those are about what we have for mileage.
Thank you. So last time, I was in favor of the wheel tax because of bridge and roads and the amount that it costs our county. We are a big county. I don't believe last time we had the full structure from the state, I think it's going to be a little bit different this time. They've made it so it's kind of got it down pat where last time it was kind of like, okay, it could be this, could be that. The other is the structure in which we do our, telling people the facts and the truth. I think a lot of that didn't get out, some of that was promoted a little bit differently and people were coming up to me and I just referred them back to our papers that we had put out and, and gave people some of those papers if they asked for them. So I believe the wheel tax can be a positive. At this point, I'm willing to wait and see what that structure is and move forward because it could have some things that need to be tweaked and different things like that. So I'm with the board here that it's kind of nice to see where we're going, what we're doing and what the state rules are because they have changed. I'm not saying I'm for or against in one sense, but do I think it'd be a positive to move forward and, and look into the wheel tax? I do and I think Gary will do its due diligence with Ms. Holly to get all that information before we move forward, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
My intent is to work through this, develop all the numbers within the next few months and probably beginning maybe in about September, have all that information that's available to be put out. I will also make myself available to go deliver the message to whoever would like to hear it, clubs, organizations, or whatever, and that'll be on my own, that's not at county expense.
Thank you. We do have some speakers today.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
I just want to point out, there's a, we have an article in front of us and since this, the wheel tax was incorporated roughly three years ago, if this article is right, which I'm assuming it is, the state has divvied out forty-one million dollars to South Dakota counties for the repairs of bridges, just bridges. The last few years, Mead County received one point seven million, Lawrence six, or nine sixty-eight thousand, Fall River, one point two. An article goes on to say that Pennington County received zero and that's simply because we weren't part of the wheel tax. So to me, if that wheel tax is feasible, we have to get more out than what the taxpayers put in. If we can do that, and to me, it becomes a financially feasible solution to one hundred and twenty-eight bridges that are deteriorating year after year after year.
Thank you Ron. Let's go ahead and have the speaker request, Tanji Weaver, please. Thank you Ms. Tanji.
Well, good morning Commissioners. Yeah, this is a topic that hasn't come up for a while, but I think I can shed some light on some of the things you've been discussing. What the state does is they assign a point value to behaviors of the counties. And if you institute a five-dollar wheel tax, then you get the maximum points and that makes you more eligible for these grants. I am going to refer, I'm going to talk about a few things here if you don't mind. First of all, I have always been of the opinion, and I think our voters have been too, that this is extortion. This is the heavy hand of state twisting the arm of counties to impose a tax on, on their citizens. It's almost like a conspiracy of governments against the people who are paying taxes. And I did read the article also that you all are referring to in the Rapid City Journal, it was there, it was on your, on your, in your packet. It's titled, Use Wheel Tax to Bridge the Funding Gap. Well, one could argue whether or not that's really a use tax because you pay that same tax on your trailer that you use once or twice a year. So whether it actually qualifies as a use tax is debatable. It's also debatable whether or not it's really a fair tax because everybody knows it's the eighteen-wheelers and bigger that are the most guilty at destroying our roads, but those vehicles are capped at sixty dollars. So is it really fair when the ones that are really doing the most damage are not being held completely accountable or at least in equal standing with everyone else? There are a lot of things to consider. First of all, you know, we hear some statistics about the counties that, that get the grants. Only ten West River counties have gotten any of these grants, most of the grants are East River. But Pennington County is being eyed, seems there's some tax envy going on out there. The citizens of Pennington County said, no, we don't want to participate in this extortion practice. If the government can tax the wheels on your car, what else can they tax? Can they tax your leather seats? Because after all, those come from farting cows. So, you know, where does it end? We have, this is, this is a question we have. And does it really benefit our county to participate in this? Pennington County right now remits to the state an extra one percent excise tax for for which the county gets no benefit. The wheel tax is basically forced taxation with no guarantee of return, that's why we have to apply for it. If we pay in, if we do all the things they say, that gets us the right to apply. There is no guarantee that any more, that any money will come back to us. Anytime we hand money over to the state, it's going to pass through a lot of hands, there's the application process, the hearing process, the money goes to the DOT and the Transportation Commission. And if we are fortunate enough to get a grant, there will be a twenty percent match that we'll have to come up for, with, for that grant. So if we get eleven million dollars or the twenty-two, I think, eleven million dollars, yeah, that'd be two point two million that we'd have to come up to match that. So I don't think this is something that has proven to be a good idea for our county. I'm proud of the citizens of this county that, that they are saying, look, there are already enough hands in our back pockets. We all talk about new sources of income or new ways, it's just a new way to get money out of the same pockets. It's just a new creative way to do it, maybe. I'm going to refer to the statement in the article, and I hope the journal's here. It says the citizens of Liberty, however, put the wheel tax measure on the ballot. I, I would say that we, we facilitated that, but it was the people that came out to sign our petitions that put that on the ballot. We, we organized it and we spearheaded it, but it was the citizens of this county that did that. And then they go on to say it was defeated, yeah, rather substantially, in a special election where the turnout was a measly fifteen percent. Well, I agree that that's not a good representation. I mean, it's not, it's not a big enough one. I'd like to see a bigger participation by our citizenry, but maybe that's something that needs to be taken up with the schools because apparently they're not adequately educating generations about their civic responsibilities. But even so, that measly number is probably a bigger number than their circulation at the journal. So I'll just be satisfied with having that on the record. It does say too, in the article, a wheel tax meanwhile would have a minimal impact on most everyone's pocketbook. I think that's an opinion without basis. I know it'd have a big impact on mine. I know that young families with young drivers and that, that maintain more than one vehicle, people with businesses that maintain vehicles, that's not a minimal impact. And again, it's not necessarily a user fee. So while I do believe that we do need to take care of our bridges, I would suggest this. I did some reading of statutes today, I'll, granted, I didn't get into the administrative rules, but it is a class one misdemeanor for a citizen not to pay the excise tax and we are obligated to collect it. But I didn't see anywhere where we're obligated to remit that extra one percent. I would posit the theory that if the five of you had the courage to stand up to the state and say, you know what, we don't have a wheel tax, but we are collecting this excise taxes, extra one percent for the repair of bridges, we're going to keep that money and we're going to put it in our own bridge fund and we're going to spend it in Pennington County. So that's something to think about. Basically, if the commission prefers to compound the tax burden of its citizens, I would think that it'd be very regrettable. It would be tantamount to acting as an accessory to blackmail, in my opinion.
Tanji?
Yes.
Be cordial a little bit more.
Well, you know, sometimes the truth is hard to hear.
I'm not, I'm not offended by truth, but some of that, that's coming out is, needs to be a little bit.
There is legal definition, there is legal definition of blackmail and extortion.
Hey Tanji, you got, wrap it up. Thank you.
Well, if you have any questions or would like to ask me about our plans, yes, we would plan to resist this and I'm glad that the plan is to put it directly on the ballot.
Thank you Ms. Tanji. Next is Gail Jorgensen.
Good morning. My name is Gail, Gail Jorgensen. I'm here to talk on the wheel tax too. A little history, part of this been brought out already, but on four oh one of twenty fifteen, that's four years ago, is when this came up before. The fuel tax went up six cents a gallon. The vehicle excise tax went from three percent to four percent, that's a twenty-five percent increase. The license fees went up twenty percent. The license fees on five-year-old cars used to be reduced by thirty percent and that was done away with, it was gone. So the five-year-old cars and older pay the same as. So the five-year-old cars and older pay the same as any other car. The real estate taxes are taking a heavy hit. Mine went up 8.6%. I've heard of others that went up 10 or 10 and a half percent. The schools are pushing for a $250 million bond issue at $2.30 a thousand. A $200,000 house would be $474. A $250,000 house would be $593,000, or $593, I mean. I don't know what the average house is in Rapid City, but somewhere in that range. There's very few $100,000 houses, and the paper seemed to indicate that that's all they were talking about, is somebody that had a $100,000 house would pay $2.37, or 237, 237 per thousand. The gas tax, gasoline, not tax, but gasoline price went from $1.89 a gallon here three weeks ago at Sam's Club to $2.70 today. The people of Pennington County have invested heavily in a new civic center. They've also invested heavily on the care center south of the courthouse here. The wheel tax was voted down by 60% of the people, as Tanji had mentioned here. It was a low turnout, but if we would've had a bigger turnout, it would've been city people, which would've been mostly low-income and Native American, and you probably would've got a worse percentage of turnout than the 60%. So if this were to be brought up today, is what I'm saying, is with all these other heavy hits on the menu, I don't see that it could go anywhere, I guess. The wheel tax is a very unfair tax. It hurts the low-income and fixed-income people the worst. Cars in South Dakota are a necessity, even though they're considered, driving is considered a right, but I kind of disagree with that. It applies only to residents. Tourists and those passing through pay nothing on a wheel tax. It does not apply to all wheels, maximum of 12. The Centipede trailers have 38 wheels, and they do far more damage to the roads and bridges than the same number of wheels on cars. That would equal nine and a half cars of one of those Centipede trailers. And they're only taxed on a wheel tax that was up before, it was a maximum of 12 wheels, 60 bucks. There's no reference to miles driven. If you drive 1,000 miles a year, or 100,000 miles a year, you'd pay the same wheel tax. There's no guarantee of a return on the money sent in. I think Tanji covered on that, that the, part of the increase in the license fees and the excise tax gets sent directly to Pier. They divvy it out as they feel like it. They have a commission that's made up mostly of East River people, and I believe there's one from Pier. Now, that was four years ago. I don't know what it is today. It might've changed, but that was the last I knew. I don't think there was even any representative from West River that's doling this money out. So there's really no guarantee you're ever gonna get anything back from what you're putting in. Let's see, the money is doled out on a point system based on the vehicles that weigh over 6,000 pounds. So they're really not talking about cars. It has, when they divvy these points out, it has to be based on cars that are over 6,000 pounds. And those are the very ones that they're not taxing all the wheels, like I just mentioned the Centipede trailers. You know, they're hitting the cars 100%, but they're not hitting the other ones. I don't know whether, I don't know whether the county ever applied for this or not. In 2018, it was what they called a CHBP, Competitive Highway Bridge Program. There was $225 million available. The deadline was December 4th of 2018. It's over with. I mean, it's not available now. I don't know whether Pennington County ever looked into that, applied for any of it, or what. There was really only three available, three grants, I guess you might call it. There was only three available, and DOT was gonna apply for one, and they hired a consulting firm for $30,000 to write the grant up, to try to get the money. And some of the northern counties were trying to apply for one of them, and I don't know whether Pennington County ever tried to get any of that or not. I understand the bridges are something that has to be looked into, and the state really messed up by trying to force this down your throat. This is really not your fault. It was designed terribly poor, this wheel tax, this kind of... It could've been done with a gasoline tax, a lot easier. That way, it would've been fair. It would've had to do with the miles you drive on the roads, and of course, the heavier vehicles are gonna use more fuel, so they're gonna pay more. The other thing is, well, I don't know how to say this, I guess. You can't impose a gas tax at county level, I understand. That has to be done at a state level. It'd be nice if the counties could impose a gas tax, and you could take care of this just on the fuel. But the way that the laws are written right now, the state is the only one that can impose that, and you're out of luck.
Thank you, Gail.
I think the county and our representatives, our senators and representatives from Pennington County should've been looking into this in the last four years, actually, and see if they could get this straightened out. And there's never been any bills that had anything to do with changing this wheel tax and making it fair and equitable, covering all the wheels, and you know, just this bridge deal never even came up in any of the four years of sessions. I think the county, the commissioners, a lot of them are previous ones, are gone now, but they could've taken this to Pier 2 and complained about how unfair this was, and see if they could get something, get a bill through that really meant something and would help. But I know we have bridge problems. I appreciate Commissioner Dewes saying that he'd like to look at this over a year's time, at least, you know, at least you're willing to take some time and look at it. And Mark brought up some of the wants and needs, I guess. I think there's a lot of those out there, that money's being spent more on wants than then needs, and maybe some of that could go toward bridges. The county has gotten by for four years without a wheel tax. I don't know how bad that's really hurt, but I haven't really, I haven't really seen that it's been a big deal, I guess. I think we got along pretty good without it.
Madam Chair.
I'm gonna let him finish speaking, and then...
Close unless someone has a question, I guess.
Are you done, Gail? Okay, hold on just a sec, sir. Commissioner Ross?
Sir, a couple of questions. Beans, I think we're all in a learning process, and you seem to know quite a bit about this wheel tax. Would your group be willing to share that information with us so that it'll help us do our due diligence?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, well, that would be greatly appreciated, so we're not starting from scratch. Second question, is there anything positive that you see with the wheel tax?
Anything positive?
Anything good about it? I mean, I've heard all the negative, I just wondered if there's anything good.
You can tax wheels, you can tax anything. The British, back when the 13 colonies were in the east, and the British were taxing, you heard about the Boston Tea Party, they were taxing tea, but they were also taxing doors and windows. And that's just saying, you can tax anything. And it's just totally, totally ridiculous, you know?
Well...
And that's one of the reasons we have a country today, is because people were taxing things that they had really had no business taxing.
Well, the third question would be, obviously, we got bridges, and most of them, 128 bridges, and let's say half of them are over 50 years old, so I'd rather be proactive than reactive. Do you think it would help us, Pennington County commissioners, to reach out to the counties that have opted to do the wheel tax and ask them what they feel, feel that it was a benefit? Or they say, look, you know, really hasn't helped us, and we're gonna probably get out of it in the future. Do you think that would help if we reached out?
But most of them did not receive any money, so I don't know how they would react to it.
I would assume negatively, but do you think that would help if we reached out to the larger counties and asked them what their opinion is? Because if it's been enforced for three or four years, I'm sure they must have an opinion one way or another.
They probably do, but...
Do you think that would help?
I don't know on that. I guess you could do it, but the ones that got money would probably be totally happy with it, and those that didn't would be unhappy with it.
Well, I would hope if we did the wheel tax that we'd get money, or I wouldn't be for it neither.
All right, guys, we still have one more speaker. Gail, thank you for your due diligence today. You gave us some really good food for thought and some good information. Thank you for your time today, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We have one more speaker, Ms. Florence Thompson, please.
Good morning, or afternoon.
Good morning, good morning. I'm going to apologize in advance. I want you to know that this is not criticism of any one person or any one board or commission or anything like that. But I'd like to speak just a little bit about the big picture, about taxation in general and the growth of government in general. Because government, the growth of government is getting out of hand. And maybe you, you know, I know that your jobs are to look at details and particular programs and particular budgets and that type of thing. But when you look at the overall picture, we're in serious trouble with the growth of government. Our state government has been growing, adding FTEs every year. The taxes just keep going up and up. The federal government's growing, the schools need more money, the county needs more money, the city needs more money, every entity needs more money. Well, where is this money gonna come from? Well, it all comes from the same place. You're taking it out of the pockets of the people. Now, what happens when you take the money out of the pockets of the people? And when I say you, I don't mean you personally. I mean, I know none of you would go up to a little old lady and say, give me your money. But in effect, that's what happens when you tax. You are taking someone's money. You are taking their livelihood. You are taking their earnings. You are taking their time. That is what, they spend their life earning that money and living on it. The more you take, the more it hurts the economy.
Ms. Florence, I'm gonna, we're a subject, and I think your subject is really good. We're speaking on the wheel tax today. If you could kind of refer that into the wheel tax and how that affects. Thank you, Ms. Florence.
Yeah, I think the wheel tax is a good example of how manipulative government has gotten in obtaining more and more taxes. They're looking for creative ways to find more ways to tax so that they can get the money. Well, if you walk down the street or drive down the street, what do you see in Rapid City? You see Sears is gone, Shopko is gone, Kmart's gone. Look at all the empty strip malls. Look at all the businesses that are just, look at downtown. It looks like a war zone, the east end of downtown. There's nothing there but empty lots now. And what we get is chains, national chains, but everybody's paying minimum wage. So what you're doing is, you know, you are taking the money. And when I say you, I mean as government. You are growing government. And when you grow government, you're shrinking the private sector, and you're impoverishing the private sector. And government jobs, government has become big business. It's the best jobs, it's the best buildings, it's the biggest everything, and what about the people? We see our economies just drying up. So think about it. I mean, and you're a small part of that, you know, as Pennington County, you know, you can't buck the whole national trend. On the other hand, every, you know, what is the straw that breaks the camel's back? You know, every entity contributes to this.
Okay, Florence, I gave you some leeway on your...
Thank you.
Discussion board, we have no more speaker requests.
I've got one more thing to say.
Commissioner Ross connect?
Hypothetically, let's just say the wheel tax passed. Hypothetically. If it did, I would really be open, not necessarily today, but to suggestions on how we could improve the way it's written so that it would have minimal impact on those in poverty, and still serve the needs to which I believe was intended, and that is to help offset the costs of our infrastructure, which I totally believe is in dire need of looking at. It's, I'm afraid that in the next few years, not only we're gonna be looking at 164th and a couple of years ago with Palmer Gulch, when these things, when these bridges go or the infrastructure goes, I just, I'd like to know the best method of how we're gonna sit there and repair those without not making some adjustments to the tax base, but I'm totally open to suggestions.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross connect. There's been good discussion on this today. We appreciate everybody and your comments. Most of the time, we gave some leeway on some of what we were talking about today, but it's nice to hear the other side. We appreciate that. Commissioner LaCroy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to rebut some of the comments that I heard. I thought it was unfair of the comparison of the journal's outreach and so forth. I may think that's funny, but I don't think the podium's a place to...
Commissioner LaCroy, let's move on. Thank you.
No, I ain't finished. I just wanted to point that out. The other one is, I think our community is doing a lot better. You know, I mean, job-wise, the economy, I mean, we gotta adapt with the changes, and I think bringing this board is going to do that. I believe nobody's made any decisions up here. Alls it was is to bring it forward, to have discussion, and a lot of stuff has been said that probably we need to check some facts on. And that's where I'm at with this, you know? I didn't like the idea of us being told we withhold our excise tax and challenge the state. But I'll leave it at that. I understand it irritates people by asking these questions, but...
Thank you.
They were brought forward to us.
Good discussion today. I appreciate everybody's information, and the bottom line is, you can check that information and those facts from either side, that that's coming out. But again, Commissioner Drew is moving this forward by, with his board to find out the information and the facts, and if we are moving forward, that's the bottom line. So thank you for all the people that came today. We're gonna move on to number 24 committee reports. Commissioner LaCroy?
You might want to wait last. I got an hour-long presentation. Slides. No, seriously, it'd probably be best if I do last.
No, you can go ahead and go first if you want. We'll be waiting either way. Thank you.
Don't be honest with us.
Go ahead. Yeah, thank you. Unless you have, need time to prepare.
Well, I was expecting to go last, but I can go ahead and go first. Thank you. What I did do, I had no other committees that I'd want to for as far as reports. What I did do is... What I did do is, I'm on the Safety Justice Challenge with the MacArthur Grant. And what we did is, had a workshop in Rockville, Maryland, last week that was attended by, what this was for was for state and local partners to promote best practices in jail diversion treatment engagement for people with co-occurring disorders. That's what the workshop was for. And what I have to admit with this workshop, folks, it was probably the most intense and probably the best one I've ever been to because of the simple fact that everybody in that room knew who they were talking about. There's 17% of the population that we have coming into our jails that are reoccurring and causing us extensive amounts of money in our jail systems, in our, in our community. And a lot of them are minor offenses and so forth. And what we, what the MacArthur Foundation was trying to do is find ways to reduce these costs. And so that was the refreshing part, is everybody in the room knew who they were talking about. We didn't have to explain it. And the other good thing about this one was that this was the first time the MacArthur Foundation and, and, I don't know what that's supposed to be, Samba Foundation, the Policy Academy, first time they've invited state to be with us. They, they felt it was important that the policies that, that counties do and the state work together. And that was what's so amazing about this. The people that we had, let me name off some of the people that was with our Pennington County. We had six states there and two counties from each state were represented with four people, so we had quite a few people. In South Dakota, we had, for Pennington County, who attended was Liz Hazit, the project manager for the, for the MacArthur Safety Challenge, myself, Laura Rosell, the chief state's attorney's office was there, and Rob Yadis from Pennington County. For Minnehaha, we had Jill Frankie, who was a public health director in Sioux Falls. We had Cindy Heidenberger, who's county commissioner. Jason Leach, who was the sergeant for the Sioux Falls Police Department. And Aaron Sisker is the project coordinator for Minnehaha. Now, for our state representatives, is what we really did good in, is we had Terry Corrigan, who was Associate Executive Officer for Behavior Management Systems. We had Chris Graham, who's Executive Director from Southeast, Eastern Behavioral Health. And we had State Coordinator Administrator Greg, I can't even pronounce his name, Satterston. He was, he's from the South Dakota Unified Justice System, so he was telling us about the justice part of it. Deb Sohold, who was State Senator from District 14, who was there. Alan Zlano, State Senator from District 32, was there. And Tiffany Wolfgang, the Director of Division of Behavioral Health. Now, that was the state group. And in, in this workshop, the second day, these people broke out, the state broke out into their own group and had speakers and technical assistants to talk to them about how to make changes in their community, how to work together and so forth. I will tell you, the end game here is we come up with an actual plan of about three things that we needed to do. We're requesting more technical assistance. Some of the things I really can't share right now because they need to be communicated with the higher-ups and get their buy-in because it's not something that's been discussed just yet. It's just minor changes in policies and intakes and probably information sharing. The biggest thing that came out of this, this workshop that I can tell you, that I learned from as a policymaker and as a commissioner, was being able to sit down with our state's attorneys, also with Rob Yadis and Laura Rosell. I mean, being able to take that time and sit back and listen to what's going on in our state's attorney's office and in our jails, just instead of getting an executive report, was just amazing. The problems that they're dealing with, they're working hard to deal with. I mean, one idea that Rob come up with was a mentoring program. And that's one that, that's later on down the road that could be happening. But they all shared the same compassion and concerns that, you know, we're having people come, they come into the jail, they get released because they're nonviolent, it's a non, but then while they're waiting for court, you know, their life's in disarray, pretty soon, something else happens, minor. And then back in, just reoccurring before the, and, and, and these people have been identified as having mental problems. You know, that was one of our biggest discussions was mental health throughout this whole conference. One of the things we brought to attention was, we had a lot of discussion on the opiate use epidemic in our country. While our community, it's meth. And so we called in another person that was in our group, or one of their guest speakers for technical assistance. So we had breakout sessions with our own, just our people in a different room. We invited them to come talk to us about what they're doing in other communities with the meth. And so that's the good thing about this MacArthur Technical Grant is they are gonna send us some technical assistance, whether it's by phone or by person. But it, I do have to admit, it was the most intense one I've ever been to. I can tell you, I went last Tuesday after this meeting, flew out, got there at 12:30, started at nine the next day, all day. And then we went three days and then we were back on the plane by four o'clock Friday, within two hours after the meetings ended. So it was just bam, 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 and meetings up until five o'clock the whole time. But the, as I said, amazing people, you find out what's going on, there'll be some follow-up. It was the first time they've had the state representatives there. I mean, a lot of answers just got questioned or answered between our state's attorney and Laura, our, Ms. Wolfgang herself, just by being able to sit across the table and talk to each other. So there's a lot of communication as far as that goes. I can say that they would like to have more commissioners available. I mean, it went that well, so. We had senators, guest speakers, who came, the first day was all guest speakers. One was a senator from, from Washington who spoke, which was pretty impressive. They did one moving story on somebody that, how the programs that, they could tell someone actually had some mental problems and how the, finding out what those needs were and fixing those instead of doing the reoccurring, saved the, saved that county more money. But I'll get some paperwork printed out from the staff and put it in you guys' box for more follow-up.
Thank you. Any other committees? Lloyd, that was a conference. Do you have committee report?
No, I was gone.
Okay. Commissioner?
No committee reports for me. I was overseas.
You were? Any reports from overseas?
It was the most incredible, amazing educational trip I've ever taken in my life.
Where'd you go again?
What's that?
Where'd you go again?
China.
Wow.
Beijing, China.
That's pretty awesome.
Yeah. Sheds a lot of light on how lucky we have it here in the United States of America.
Yes, sir. Two good reports. How about you, Commissioner Roskin?
Does it have to be a committee?
Nope.
Okay. Well, I'm working diligently with Shannon. As you know, trying to come up with a better, more transparency when people get their assessment notices, the difference between owner occupied and non-owner occupied, and the benefit of being owner occupied. So that next year, we don't have to have folks come in here and ask them for abatements because they didn't see it, they claimed that it wasn't transparent enough. So we're working that, trying to improve the notices that go out to the taxpayers. I think it's April, by March, end of March, I believe. And then the other one would be, for new construction, there would be a pamphlet for these folks that they come in from out of state or other countries and they build a new home in the county, that they'll be informed of the, some of the South Dakota statutes that might benefit them as far as owner occupancy and non-owner occupancy. The whole idea behind that is more transparency between the county and the taxpayers.
Thank you, Ron.
Last week, I did meet with ECP. It's Engineered Concrete Products. I was there looking for some information on a project that I have where I live. And while I was there, I, I noticed that they did some pretty large concrete products. So I met with them and I asked them to contact our highway department and just get a bid on if we opted to do the concrete culverts on 164, that we would have one more option to look at. And so today, that present, we had that information and I think there's better routes to go, but at least we knew that we didn't miss one.
Thank you.
I went to WAL last Monday to a city council meeting for the Penning, Pennington County Aging Council. And their concern was, in WAL, there's a rapid, rapid, River City Transit is the only transportation service available. They claimed that they were gonna stop service in WAL so that disabled or senior citizens would not have access to hospitals, groceries, medical, whatnot. So we went to the meeting and when Amy got up to visit, the mayor assured her that that service was not going to end, but they were gonna modify it a little bit so that if people have to go to the hospital or medical appointment, groceries, other destinations, that this Rapid River, Rapid River City Transit would just ask that they call one day ahead so that they could schedule accordingly because they didn't want to have anybody sitting in WAL all day and not have any calls. So we're working on, just trying to streamline that a little bit, but bottom line is that the, that service is still being provided and they're, and some of the directors with this aging committee, they're, they're working with the city of the wall to see if we can do some additional things to provide better transportation for the aging and the elderly. And lastly, on the building committee. Probably the largest item that we got there is we got the La Crosse Street facility and we're looking at options that probably will be coming before the board, consider that surplus property. If that's the case, then we'll have to figure out a method to dispose of it. So we're looking at alternatives there and the cost that would be involved with those alternatives.
Nice.
And that should be it for me.
Madam Chair, I forgot one thing.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Before Gary got started, I just wanted to share that I did the 4H meeting when Mark was gone and Gary covered for me on the Central States Board, because we were in the same area, same time. They worked on their budget, looking good. They narrowed down their application, I think, to top four for the director. So I'm forgetting what's name's name, president of, chairman of the...
Oh, um...
Nate, not Nate.
No, uh-uh, Matt.
Matt. Matt can catch you up on that. But he said they got some good applicants and so they were really impressed. And I wanted to thank Gary for swapping with me.
Good. Well, thank you for attending that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Drews?
Well, the only one I have to report on is the Central States Fair, which I filled in for Lloyd. And their discussions were really around the upcoming Central States Fair this August, looking at the various venues that they'll have to offer. They do have that, I just thought of it a second ago, now I lost it. The Extreme Bronx Riding that's coming in on that Thursday of that week, which is a, really a big deal for, this will be covered nationally by CBS, as I understand it. This is a huge event for us, for this area. And this is not a one-year thing, this is a four-year thing. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Most of mine were canceled, but I did do something pretty exciting. The, we did have three snow days. And I got up at 4:30 today, or got called at 4:30, and then we had a great team from the sheriffs, the highway and emergency management to make some decisions. And I thought that went really well, how we worked as a team to try to figure out. You already know the weather is a little bit harder than you think to figure out because it's a South Dakota 70-degree day, and the next day we have a blizzard. But the exciting thing I got to do is ride around with Fane Sunquist. We went to South Rochester Road and a couple other areas in the snowplow, and that was pretty awesome. So I, I enjoyed it a lot. The highway department, we do have an amazing highway department. And Fane reiterated that, and he's been with us for, I think, at least five years. I think I know his family history after sitting in the vehicle for a couple hours, and he knows mine. But I had a really exciting time, so that was pretty cool. Got there about 5:45 and was good to go. So thank you for that opportunity, Highway. So that's all I have. Any other reports that we missed?
Hopefully, Highway puts you in the oldest vehicle that they had, the roughest riding one.
Which is funny, it was one of their older ones, and he was like, "I don't know if I know how to do this." And I said, "Well, I can't do a stick at all, so..."
I've been assured that the new trucks are quite comfortable.
Well, that's what he was saying. He said, "I actually have to shift this one and do these." And I said, "I don't even know how to drive a stick, so..."
Madam Chair.
I wouldn't know the difference unless, see, you just told me, but...
I might just touch base. We did attend the compensation committee. And that was very productive. I think the county and Mark, Human Resources and John, they're just looking at ways to get better employee retention. That's, there's, they pointed out 10 factors that employees decided to leave their workforce. And we think that we can focus on two or three of those and implement some type of a process that we can keep employees for a longer period of time. Because as the sheriff said, if he asks a deputy that has five years' experience, and that deputy decides to leave, that you're looking at $60,000 to $70,000 to bring in a new deputy and train them. So I think retention's very important, and that's one thing that Human Resources has recognized and we're working on.
Thank you. I did talk with Lloyd about his conference, and it did get me excited to go to a conference this year because of all the information and the stuff that I learned from National League of Cities. And that kind of reiterated what that means to go to some of those and learn more things than just the surrounding area in South Dakota. So I thank you for that, Lloyd, and what you shared because I thought it was pretty amazing what you guys learned and what you brought back with you. So thank you for the sharing today. I was giving you a hard time today, but he's used to it. Anyway, great job. So next, we'll move on to vouchers, number 25. Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Drews?
Second.
Second by Roskin. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just for public information, we are paying out $1,741,495.48.
Any follow-up, sir? Commissioner DeSanto?
What partner?
Any follow-up?
No follow-up.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Number 26 is from the public. You guys public out there? If not, motion to adjourn. Motion by DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.